Boy Craig just left too.
I go slower, we couldn't get back to others one.
Looks like we're in that direction, been going in the right, read slower and then slower more.
Alright, let's get underway here. Heavenly Father, help us to make the right decisions for the people of Alphona County, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Small.
Here.
Brady.
Here.
Jack.
Here.
Johnson?
Yeah.
Bronwyn.
Here.
I'm going to slide in real quick here, a quick presentation for Stephanie Heller. The board commissioners have sent an award from the where is this? Michigan Fair Elections Institute. And the award, the direct result, only eighteen other clerks got it in the state of Michigan. The direct result for the rapidness and fullness of the election result information when it was requested. So. Sound of all behind your desk there. There you go Stephanie, congratulations.
Pictures, pictures.
You work it for the paper?
Well. Never know. Somebody just complained that the election wasn't fair, we know it was. That being said, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Come on.
Seconded, we were seconded in conversation. All those in favor. I, all opposed, Rosa Carries. Comment, through Mr. Person, identify yourself from your township, wherever you come. Looks like we don't have anybody, excellent. Uh, moving into presentations, we'll start at the Alphona Humane Society. President Robin Savage and Jenna Hill, the shelter manager, the lineup. Missy brought forty of me to even you.
We have the rest of our executive board if they're allowed up here.
Sure, bring them up. Let's meet the whole board.
Yeah, why not? Commissioners, thanks for having us today, we surely appreciate it. I'm Robin Savage, president of the Alphona Humane Society. Um, this is Jenna Hill, she's our full-time manager over there at the shelter and the two other ladies, I'll let them in.
I'm Lisa Thad, and I'm secretary in force.
I'm Helen Pope, I'm vice president.
We won't take too much of your time, we don't know how much time we would have, so we'll keep it short and sweet, uh, which is a task for me, but I'll do my best. Um, so thank you again for seeing us today, we have a few goals in, in presenting today. And, um, so we would like to start with just kind of talking to you a little bit, and we'll keep it brief, about what services we provide to the community. Um, since I took over, I've sat on the board for a few years, but since I took over in January as president, people have approached me out in the community and said, oh, we didn't know you did X, Y, and Z. So I thought this would be a good opportunity to talk to you all and anybody who's out there or tuning in, um, to learn a little bit more about the services that we provide, because there is a plethora, a plethora of services that we provide. Um, so I think probably you're familiar with Precious Paws, our resale shop here in Harrisville, which brings in, um, you know, most of our revenue, which is why today we are not here asking for money. Um, and you know what, to continue on the services we provide, I'm going to hand it over to Jenna, our manager, and she's going to take it from there.
Um, part of our revenue also comes from our annual fundraisers that we do in the community. Um, we engage in community education as far as traveling to schools and libraries, offering animal welfare education. Um, we trap, neuter, and release cats in Lincoln where there's an overpopulation of feral homeless cats. We house stray and abandoned cats and dogs. Fifty-eight percent of our dogs come from the sheriff's department. Reuniting, um, stray and lost pets with their owners is another service that we offer. Safe home placement for, um, the homeless cats and dogs that are brought to us as stray or owner surrender. Medical care for in-house residents, we have a foster program for in-house residents. And we offer a stay-huter incentive program, which a brochure was provided, which gives the community, um, a hundred dollars towards fixing their cat or dog. Um, community event engagement, which goes a lot along with the fundraisers. And resource donation to our community. We provide straw for cold weather, we give out excess food that our in-house animals can't utilize to our community.
Really glad Jenna did that, I could not have done that in three seconds' time, and you did a good job. Um, so you'll see at the bottom of the outline that we handed out, uh, we do have, we've set in place some goals for this year and, and, uh, moving forward in general. So one of our goals is to have improved communication and improved relationships with the parties that we are directly involved with. So, um, regardless to say we are directly involved with the community, knee-deep every day. Uh, but in this, in addition to that, we are speaking toward our relationship with the commissioners, our relationship with the sheriff, and our relationship with, uh, Mr. Whitehall as well. So that's one of our goals that we have moving forward with this new board that, that took place in January. And another one is, we would like to have improved partnerships with the community at large to better the animal welfare community. I'm sorry if that was redundant. Um, but, so in the past, when we had a few ideas, we didn't want to comment, said, we want to do all these things, we had all these grandiose visions, but we don't really know how we're going to see these things to fruition. So, um, one thing that we chatted about is that in, in the past, we've sold dog licenses and, um, you know, that sort of fell to the wayside of some time ago, several years ago. But we're happy to help in any capacity, including that one, if that would be beneficial to our community. Um, we are also willing to take any sort of safety training classes or any sort of training to better assist the sheriff's department. So I'm from the city of Detroit, Detroit proper, where we had our own, the underground group of gentlemen who, you know, the police department, who their specific task was taking care of animal cases, so neglect and abuse. And then the three shelters that I've worked in in the last twenty-five years, in the city of Detroit, they allowed us to assist in several capacities. So, you know, again, we've had this conversation with the board, we would love to be able to assist in any way that is possible, right, legally possible. So we're willing to work alongside the sheriff's department, again, at whatever capacity that looks like, so that we can be a better assistance. In the, in the last few years, we've come across several hoarding situations, we don't really see dog fighting uh, situations so much as I did when I was in the city of Detroit, that was a rampant thing. We don't, knock on wood, we see that kind of thing up here, but we would like to help assist, better assist in these hoarding situations that I just, that I just brought up. Furthermore, we would love to provide any sort of animal handling training to, A, the community at large. We just received a grant to provide that sort of training to the community, but also to law enforcement up here. Uh, we know that, we, we're very familiar with reading body language and things of that nature, I have a PhD in behavior, which includes animal behavior, and so my board and I feel very strongly about being able to get out there on foot and recognizing certain behaviors and knowing how to circumvent certain, certain situations by reading that body language. So those are just a few things that we would love to work to improve our partnerships, our existing partnerships. Um, some ideas that we've sort of, uh, bounced around at the board meetings. And at this point, I chatted a lot, did you have anything that you would like to add to that?
No, I don't think so, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I think, um, one thing that Jenna and I have, have talked about frequently, um, most recently, is how, how can we, we want to be more helpful. We think that we have some, several good ideas here, but at this point, I think we would like to ask you all to consider ways that we could be more helpful to the commissioners. Whether that be, um, by way of providing a liaison, I'm happy to, I'm sure I'll go to Helen, my vice president, to sit in on these meetings and maybe to provide some updates. We're not entirely sure what that would look like, but we would like to have that conversation. Um, we do, we've incorporated some documents for you to look over, just some basic information about services that we provide, how we, uh, operate over at the shelter, and I think that kind of.
Robin, I think we had a suggestion where if, if actual physical meetings weren't available, maybe emails or sending a, a, a letter, you know, monthly, quarterly, just so that you have an idea of what's going on with shelter as well. So that, I think that was an effort that we had to.
Yep.
And, and really, the, the key is to work as a partnership. You know, it's a large issue, the, the animal welfare, we all care about animals and, and so everyone to feel like we're working together is really the essential message on how we can help each other out.
So I think that does it for, for us to get it to today, I have some business cards, may I approach?
Yeah.
To drop off if anybody needs to get ahold of us, again, Robin Savage, president, Helen Pope, vice president, and Jenna and Lisa, we are all available at natural disposal.
Are your board meeting schedules on this, here for work anywhere?
No, we can get that too.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, if you so, if you so desire. How soon?
Maybe not tomorrow, the information tomorrow, okay, but I don't know if we send somebody tomorrow to.
Yeah, yeah.
The third Thursday.
Third Thursday?
Yeah.
At five PM.
At the library.
I'm sorry, what was the time?
Five PM.
Do you have a, a feel for, do you have a problem in Alphona County with? I, I don't, I, I don't.
I don't know where you're going, but the answer is yes.
Yeah. So, yeah, in animal neglect cases, I mean, whatever it is that you deal with, we have. So the hoarding means someone has got an issue with hoarding animals?
Yes, right.
Oh, okay.
Usually cats.
Yeah. So somebody who, let's say, has sixty cats and animals, that's what you.
Yep.
Are looking at.
I think we had that a couple of years ago, didn't we, right? Yeah. Yeah.
And dogs, we recently, um, assisted in providing information to law enforcement about a, a serious dog hoarding situation. Unfortunately, by the time we had, um, crossed all of our Ts and dotted all of our Is, a lot of those animals were deceased. So it is a very real problem.
And animals being left in abandoned homes, or people not having, um, you know, leasing the house anymore, they just leave the dogs in that. And then half the time suddenly they're deceased or not moved to share, um, when it comes to the shelter.
Well, it'd be a good idea, reach out to township, there's a lot of zoning, uh, ordinances, or talk about how many pets in the home, there are two, so. Okay, so third, third days. You don't know what the sheriff's like now, too.
Yeah, we do, yeah, yeah. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Okay, Erin Mahout, equalization director.
Um, before you all had a chance to look at the report, uh, there's not anything really exciting to talk about.
What's your A? What's your A?
I, I specifically left that out. Uh, burn review was boring in some townships and kind of exciting in others, but are there any questions? There should be a resolution to sign and then several forms. You have to get copies of those stuff and everything to resolve.
There's some forms also, she said, I don't know. Make sure you know. I know it's in here somewhere, our taxable value went up and the tax value both went up.
Yeah, assessed around ten percent, taxable was around just under six, I believe.
Is that the max? And that's a bit five and a half or something is the most? Yeah, five. Well, five, but I mean.
Inflation is five, but on capping, it can go above that, so.
So it was ten percent.
Ten percent was assessed, market value.
What was A?
Uh, that's a good question, hang on.
I know he gulped and I know I gulped before, so.
They should all have the percentage, but, uh, each three-ish, you can kind of see.
We had some pieces of about forty-seven percent. And I know others were, oh, you're twenty-seven? Forty-seven, forty-seven, okay. Yeah, no, it's fine with us.
That was not the equalization department.
No, I know it wasn't. I went to the board review and said my piece, but it didn't. I'm assuming the state gave it a very high, quite a bit higher.
No, not the state, um, equalization does their own study.
Right.
And we say this is what we came up with, this is your ratio. If you love this, is where you need to be. We can't tell them where to raise, but a lot of times, um, land value was easiest to do, because you don't have to take out buildings and all that jazz, so it's possible that they did more. So, yes, I'm, I, I, I can't answer four of them, but I don't even want to try.
Just a second, uh, I would like to move to, um, adopt and authorize the sheriff to sign a resolution on twenty twenty-five dash oh seven and the accompanying documents.
Move to seconded, any questions or comments? Very good. Everything good? Um, is this a roll call, roll call please?
Johnson.
Yeah.
Brady.
Yes.
Small.
Yes.
Jack.
Yes.
Bronwyn.
Yes.
Okay, thank you Erin.
Thank you.
Missy Cordes, register your D's office update property fraud presentation.
I'll start, um, with board report, um, just have a couple of things to, um, I guess bring forward. Um, recording volume, um, and our revenues are right about where they were last year, um, slightly higher with recording volumes, but we know with the revenue, uh, don't, not really anticipating anything major changing with that, um. Things moving on smoothly there, um. Nancy and I attended conference in March and, uh, the two big topics at conference were, um, AI or automated intelligence and then also a lot of fraud discussion. And, um, today I am going to be presenting, um, property fraud alert presentation. I have, um, done this presentation three different times in the community so far. Um, I did the Harrisville Lincoln and Curtis Township branch of the libraries. I had a total of thirty-two people with all of those, um, presentations, so not a huge number of people, but the information was well-received, um, people were taking information home to take it to their neighbors, so, um, I feel like it was a very positive thing. Um, and I do plan to continue to, um, try and get more of this information out there. Um, so I do plan to do more presentations in the community, uh, throughout the year. Uh, another thing, so, um, I, a couple of weeks ago in the, uh, Alphona review, there was the sheriff, there was an article that was written in regards to scams. You know, the sheriff had been interviewed, there was also, um, an article in there, Mary Weber had been, um, with me and interviewed me, um, talking a little bit about the real estate fraud and property fraud. So that's for quite a bit of interest, I think, from people that read the paper. So the office has been, um, quite busy the last couple of weeks, uh, lots of phone calls, people coming in wanting to sign up for the property fraud alert. So, I mean, it was a positive thing, it's, um, you know, a little bit, been a little bit busier in the office, but that's all right, we're happy to promote the program, so. Um, and then as of yesterday, um, so from January first through April fifteenth, um, we've enrolled two hundred and twenty-one new names into the property fraud alert system, so, um, whatever we're doing, the information's getting out there and it's working, so. Um, last thing I wanted to update you on is, um, I think it was two years ago now, we had started a, uh, project which was, um, w- we were restoring the flat maps in the register's office. So, uh, the first step of that project kind of had a couple of pickups. Um, I feel like we're finally at a good spot, we have everything the way it should be, so I am, um, looking at now, um, moving forward and continuing and doing the remainder of the flat maps that are in the office. So they did, uh, approximately a hundred and forty-eight, I think, the first time. Um, so they'll be close to two hundred maps this time, um, but they came back much better and it was, it was well worth it, just a little bit of a struggle to get where I felt we needed to be in terms of the outcome of the project, so. Okay, just a moment here, and presentation up. Okay, so to begin, um, I will be discussing, um, property fraud alert. Still isn't checked right. Hang on just a moment. All right, let's move forward. Can't see my notes, but that's all right. I'll go from memory. Uh, anyway, so um, property and mortgage fraud. So according to the FBI, property and mortgage fraud is the fastest growing white collar crime in the US. And what this is, is when someone illegally uses your property for their financial gain. So uh, what scammers will do is look for uh, property that they think is abandoned. Uh, they may forge documents to record a phony property transfer. Uh, their intent may be to take out a mortgage on the property. They may choose to sell that piece of property then to unsuspecting buyers. And oftentimes we'll see that done with a quitclaim deed because it's um, quick and easy to prepare and record. A lot of times also they target senior citizens or absentee owners. Uh, so people that, um, which we have a lot of that here, people who go south for the winter for a few months. Um, they may um, intimidate someone into signing a document. May not be that individual's intention to want to do that, but they may feel that they have no other choice. Um, they could be targeted by relatives to transfer the properties um, for their financial gain. Um, and then what happens is real owners are forced to go to court to reclaim their property. So it's uh, can be a very devastating um, situation for everyone involved. So just some things to know, um, in regards to maybe the registrar's office. Um, it is very easy to purchase or find a quitclaim deed. I mean, anyone can go to Google now and search for something and pretty much can find it. Um, I also know that um, office stores like Staples or Office Depot, a lot of times they will sell a quitclaim deed form. Um, so that information is easily accessible for criminals. Um, we at the registrar deeds office do try to promote positive interaction with the people that are um, visiting the office or calling us on the phone. We are also required to record a document once it meets recording requirements set by the state of Michigan. So um, oftentimes I think people just think, well, if you knew it wasn't me, you don't have to record it, right? Well, we do. I mean, we can't just pick and choose what we record. So I think that's kind of been a little bit of an eye opener for a lot of people. They didn't realize that it doesn't have to be them presenting the document to report it. Once we record a document, they are on record for um, infinity. Uh, if someone is buying or selling property, we do encourage them to use a reputable title company or a real estate agents. And I know that most of the board members know this, we do accept electronic recordings in the registrar deeds office. Um, but that doesn't mean that someone can just email us a document to record. So if you're recording something electronically, it does have to be submitted through one of the um, four e-recording vendors that we work with, and they actually contract with attorneys or title companies in order for those um, businesses to be able to submit the documents electronically. So uh, there are requirements that need to be met between that vendor and the person submitting the document in order for it to come through to the registrar deeds office. So there are securities um, in place for that. Um, the registrar deeds office does not perform title searches. I think a lot of people think that, oh, well, you know where my property's at. No, no, we don't. We know it's just a document. We don't know who is where all the time. Um, now, if someone comes to the office and they're looking for information and they may be hit a stumbling block or need help, um, if time permits, we're more than happy to help them, but we don't just go back there and and do a full search. Uh, statistics do show that most fraudulent documents are walked into the office for recording. So there's another um, misconception. I feel like a lot of people think since we accept the electronic recordings that that's the way they would be. That would be the easiest way for them to be fraudulently recorded, but um, statistics actually show opposite, you know, it's people actually walking that paper document into the office. So back in November of twenty twenty-four, House bills fifty-five ninety-eight and fifty-five ninety-nine were signed into law. Uh, there was a ninety-day waiting period, so now we're uh, past that. Um, so these bills made uh, filing fraudulent real estate documents illegal. Um, they can incur penalties of three to ten years in prison or fines of five thousand dollars or up to five thousand dollars. So on to the actual property fraud alert. So this is an alert system that is offered through the registrar deeds of office, um, and it is through our computer vendor, uh, which is Fiddler Technologies, um, based out of um, Davenport, Iowa. So this is a free service. It is automated. It will monitor your name to assist you in tracking the possible fraudulent activity. Um, it is customizable in the way that you can choose how to be notified. That can be done either by an email, a phone call, or by a text. And so these next slides just kind of show what it looks like. If you were to go online to propertyfraudalert.com and and um, want to register yourself, you can do that. Um, once you go to that website, this is the uh, this is the map that you see. You would click on the state of Michigan. Um, then uh, and this is not quite a current list. I think there's been a couple more counties added since I actually put this presentation together. Um, I looked the other day, there's thirty-three counties in the state of Michigan that actually use, excuse me, this um, property fraud alert program. A lot of the other registrar of deeds offices do have um, the same type of an alert program. It's just through a different computer vendor. Uh, so thirty-three of them use the same program as as um, we do here in Alcona County. So um, I always like to add on here, too, if people have second homes, um, if if your county is included on there, you could register your name in that county as well, um, to be monitored. If you do have a second home or other properties somewhere in the state of Michigan, you could also contact that registrar deeds office where your property is located and um, I believe that nowadays, most of the registrar deeds offices do have um, programs like this. So you will come to the page. This actually is the page for the Alcona um, county property fraud alert. And then uh, once you click continue, it will ask you for your information. Uh, you can do personal information. You can also list a business or trust name to be monitored, and this is a follow-up address where it is a first and last name and a confirmation of that. And then you're going to choose either email, text, or a phone call, and you'll have to insert the appropriate information there. Uh, if you choose to get the phone message, it is a recording of myself stating that this is Melissa Cordish, your registrar of deeds, calling about a document that's been recorded in our office. Um, just notifying you that you previously signed up for property fraud alert um, and to please stay on the line and listen to the specific uh, details of the document that was recorded. Um, and I always tell people if they receive this phone call, I mean, it says in here, please do not hesitate to contact our office, and I do always encourage people, if you receive an alert, you're more than welcome to call the office. We can let you know what was recorded unless you know you were just in there yesterday and brought us a paper document to report. Um, it's just kind of some peace of mind. So um, you can register for property fraud alert a few different ways. You can go to propertyfraudalert.com. There's also an eight-hundred number and someone um, there from Fiddler Technologies is always more than helpful to make sure and get you registered. Uh, you could also contact the registrar deeds office. Um, and I think for most, most, in most cases, most people prefer to contact the registrar deeds office. I mean, that's, I don't, I mean, some people have gone online. I think there's just maybe a sense of security. If they come to the office or they call our office, then they know for sure it's a legitimate um, program. So um, we do receive quite a few calls or we have been. Um, but again, this is, the service is free to taxpayers. Um, something else I'd also like to add is it doesn't, you can register, say you have an elderly parent or um, someone that maybe, you know, you look out for. You can register their names and have the notification sent to yourself. So um, I always, you know, tell people that because maybe their elderly parent lives here and they're not sure and they kind of want to watch. I mean, no one has to know that their name has been signed up. I mean, if if my mother lived here, I probably would register her name and make sure that I was aware if something was reported, so um, just wanted to throw that out there, too. Uh, I missed some talk, talking points during my presentation because I couldn't see the notes that I had um, set with each slide. But I would like to say that um, probably about two months ago now, uh, I was watching the news and there was a news clip from Lake County, which I don't know if anyone knows where Lake County is. West Side, about middle of the state. Um, and it was, this was the type of situation um, that could have really gone badly. There was a property that had been fraudulently listed for sale. Um, it had been listed by an out-of-area realtor and uh, the neighbor questioned um, the sale of the property and contacted the owner. Um, so that is kind of what halted things. Um, this uh, news article said that the scammer had um, a fake ID with all the property owner's information. And you know, nowadays, you know, every, we have all this information online, our G I S systems. I mean, people can just, you can find out so much information. Um, so it's very easy for them to create fraudulent documents. Um, so just be diligent and um, I guess if you see something suspicious, report it. I mean, if, you know, if it's your neighbor's property and there's a for sale sign, you know, it doesn't hurt to contact your neighbor and question. I mean, in this case, it saves someone a lot of time, effort, and money because you know, you have, you then have to go to court to rectify the situation if something does happen. Um, so last thing, I mean, if you believe that you've been a victim of fraud, obviously you need to contact law enforcement and take appropriate steps from there. Anyone have any questions?
We have to, sure.
Hmm, I'm glad you asked that. Um, I would say I don't know that I've experienced a true case of uh, property fraud. However, I will tell you, last October, we did um, have an individual come to our office and report a document stating that um, it's, a real estate agent had been contacted and a um, was impersonating him to try to list his property for sale. And um, so that is the closest thing I know to the property fraud, which would have been a similar situation to what I was just speaking of. Um, so, you know, I, he had um, spoken with an attorney because the document he thought had been prepared by an attorney's office to be put on record and um, just basically stated that if the, the property in question was um, having title work done or being bought or sold or conveyed somehow to be sure that you were actually working with that individual and not, and you know, making sure that you're proving the identity of the person. I mean, another way to do that is, you know, so many things are done nowadays, email or remotely, and in some cases, I'm not always sure that that's the best way to go about things, you know? There's ever a question, pick up the phone and actually, you know, contact that company or just to be sure you're actually working with the right individual. Anything else?
Ooh, very good. Thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
Next up is Dan O'Connor, Alcona superintendent.
You get a little better on uh, time at this point. So uh, last night I had a public comment. My kid, I think I kept it a little under three minutes, so. We're in on that and I'll take questions if there happens to be any. But uh, for those that don't know me, I'm Dan O'Connor, uh, superintendent of Alcona uh, schools. Uh, go back in time, two thousand and six, I was hired as an English and history teacher, coach, um, transitioned into uh, elementary principal, AD, high school principal, AD, and then uh, superintendent of the last eight years, give or take, which is crazy to think there's a couple parents in here, a former student, person I coached as well. So a lot of different things uh, in the room, so it's good to see some of those people and make those connections again. Uh, on May sixth, the district has a special um, election ballot proposal, like two of them actually. Um, before I get into the details of the proposal, I do want to say, this is uh, in two thousand and twenty-three, we presented the community bond idea where we were going to make probably larger scale improvements and or a few small new structures to the district. Uh, feedback was received uh, two thousand and twenty-three that that was not something the community was open to entertaining at that point. Totally okay. Um, so we are back to uh, to renewals that are on ballot on May sixth, and I just want to kind of restate that here. Renewals of taxes, um, I definitely understand the um, it's a challenging climate right now for any uh, tax increase or renewal, um, either way. Uh, just to kind of briefly explain, the first tax, so the uh, renewal one is the eighteen mils, which is uh, provides ninety percent of our operating local revenue for operating budget. So that funds pretty much the logistics of running day-to-day school, you know, on long and short it. So a lot of, a lot of people, a lot of uh, different things that are needed, supplies, um, just basic necessities essentially to help us, you know, operate school on a day-to-day basis. Uh, village two, um, also renewal is the sinking fund, very different um, than the eighteen mils. So um, the sinking fund is a little bit under one mil, and by the way, both of these are five-year renewals. Uh, the sinking fund, it cannot be used to pay for people or or anything like that, um, has to be used for guts and infrastructure. So if you look on uh, this side of the document, the one that kind of has a couple pictures on it. Um, in the left column, it kind of goes to the projects that have been completed from the sinking funds. So this would, if if successful, this would be sinking fund years eleven through fifteen. Okay, so this initially passed in two thousand and fifteen. Um, the two projects that are not included on that, that left column there are that are actually happening this summer is our replacement of our middle high school parking lot, and um, we're starting to replace univentilators um, in our middle high school. For those that are familiar with their middle high school, you've got a wing that was built in the late uh, nineteen fifties. You had a wing that was built in the late seventies, and then you got another um, section that was built there around the late nineties, okay? Uh, univentilators, uh, those, we still have original univentilators in those nineteen fifties classroom right now at this point. So uh, kind of backtrack this slightly. The parking lot project, uh, when I talk to people about kind of replacing the parking lot, you know, I tell them it's going to be over six hundred thousand dollars this summer. They think, right, you're going to fix all the parking lots. No, it's, it's literally the drive-up and the area in front of the middle high school. Um, we have uh, pretty significant changes trying to improve traffic in that area, uh, more safe drop-off for parents and and students and things like that. And then obviously replacing the uh, infrastructure and the rest of the parking area, too. Univentilators, um, if there were students here, I may be able to tell you at this point, um, in their lifespan, um, they're far past, um, where they're supposed to be, um, probably in still a lot of these buildings, and they actually are disruptive to the educational awareness. So we picked out our top eight that we can handle this year and kind of is plan on, you know, piecing it together as time goes on. Um, you know, again, each kind of quarter or third of the building, those three different additions I talked about, you know, we've got almost a hundred U of L areas replaced, so it's not going to, you know, happen just like that, but trying to pick out the priorities as we work forward. Uh, in the middle column, you see kind of the proposed plan for twenty-six thirty, a lot of parking lots, um, trying to improve some entrances, replacing the old doors, windows, um, a boiler system that's original in the elementary right now. Um, as you can see, they're not very uh, fancy uh, pieces. We're really just trying to continue to replace our infrastructure and do it as responsibly as possible. I will say, you know, the areas in the middle, the kind of that center column, um, you never know when something may go awry in the district, and so like three years ago, when our boiler stacks on top of each other, you know, we had to reprioritize that boiler project. three years ago, when our boiler stacks on top of each other, you know, we had to reprioritize that boiler project that bumped a couple others down. You know, just with the age of different things, you know, in the district and the facilities, sometimes that has to happen. So this is a pretty much straight up our facilities plan and our our plan to move forward in over three minutes. I left Carolyn down because she saw me knock it out last night. Not quick and flipping fast, so. Lot of information, short time, um kind of go back to the eighteen mils just briefly. That's a, that's a weird one to explain um to people because it's a vote on non homestead, so it'd be properties, businesses, you know, second homes, things like that. So it's actually a um it's an odd thing to propose to people that are voting on things that you may not even be taxed on necessarily. So not going to go back to taxation without representation and do a history lesson from the seventeen hundreds, but it's a proposal A, uh eighteen mils every district's challenged to pass that since the early nineties. So I'm here for another round of renewals. The district has chose to do that every five years, so we maintain good relationship with the community. Could be a lot longer stretch than that, depending on different places um around the state, but this is how our district has decided to do it, so.
Any questions again? Alright, great. Okay.
Thanks a bunch.
Good luck then.
Alright, yes. Yeah, thank you. Forty meetings in twenty-five days, so we're so, God funding anybody? My information on the back, if anybody has any questions, do something else.
Okay. I need to add to this uh third item of discussion regarding that position in the treasurer's office. We'll start with claims.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve pre-authorized claims and open claims presented for payment between four two of twenty-five and four fifteen of twenty-five. Her check number is one five seven two six seven to one five seven four three five. And E checks two six zero seven to two six one four for a grand total of one million seven hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Support.
Who supported? Any uh discussion? Roll call.
Small.
Yes.
Brady.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brumman.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries. Next up is resolution twenty-five oh seven to support Amtrak rail service. And there was a gentleman supposed to log in here and wanted to have some input. I'm not sure if he's actually made it to the meeting today.
It should be twenty twenty-five oh eight. My original information is seven and that's, you know, we just did seven.
So in essence of the individual. Wait, is that John? Who's that from the left hand corner? Was it a?
A host and co-host.
Oh, this is word based, remember? Well, uh, would you like to uh, you have any information you can impart to us?
Well. There are those among us that feel that it's laughable. Um, it is high in the sky. It is much of that. But um, the concept is really terrific. The doing of it is something else completely. But my theory and the reason that I went ahead and did produce the um, which isn't coming out of this, but anyway, um, the um. I don't see any harm in basically saying, this would be really neat for the community, and it reaches inland a ways. Um, we did receive, what? Promoted this was, we did receive a um resolution from both Boykin County and from Saginaw County. And that was what kind of started the ball rolling a little bit. I spoke to people in both counties. Um. The tracks would not hold. You know, it's new tracks, it's new foundations under the tracks. Um, not to mention new cars, new everything, new engines, everything else. That's, I sort of hope that as, I can't address that. Um, I'm not knowledgeable enough to address this. And so I, I am knowledgeable enough to believe that if we had a daily train that brought people through our community, maybe, just maybe, some of them would stop. And my own mother always rode the train down when she went to college. She went from Sheboyden to Alban, and she always told the stories about stopping in at the green bush end to have people get on and have people get off. So in honor to my mother. Sorry about that before. I'll say, why not?
Is that a motion?
Yes, I would so moved to authorize the chair design and um and approve the resolution.
I didn't know Carolyn's mother, but I would support that.
Thank you.
And I would add that I think it's a great idea. It's got to start somewhere. So there's been talks of this for many, many years. Of even a short, a short one from Ostrava, Delpina. Um, it has been talked about, so. And you can either get traction from an economic point of view or degree. In fact, we were even talking about doing one just from Harrisville up to like Stevie Coin area or from the park to Osnead and there's, there is a lot of things to get done.
There's a lot of
We got to start it somewhere.
To the possibility of it, but um. It's got to start someplace, as you said. And since two other counties have already jumped on board, um, we can certainly say, yeah, it's a good idea. And that basically was the intent of the resolution, to say, yeah.
My grandpa actually rode the train, since we're going to have some of our elders to talk about. My grandpa used to live up in uh uh Haynes, the old church was up there. Him and his sister would get on a train on Sunday afternoon and ride down here to go to Harrisville High School, spend the week at a house down on the lake, uh a boarding house, and then go back on Fridays on the train. That was nineteen twenty-five, fifteen thirty.
I used trains to get places that.
Yeah. I wrote.
That is gay.
I I rode a lot of trains in my Air Force wear.
Oh, yeah.
And I know what it, what it feels like to ride on trains. I, this is, it's a nice dream. That's all I'll say.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All opposed?
Resolution.
Resolution, oh, I thought it was a I thought it was a uh
Yes.
Brady?
Let her support, uh, yes.
Small?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brumman?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Did you get that signed?
My
We're waiting to get it for honor there.
Also.
You what?
My mother's name is honor.
Honor?
You know, it's good.
Were weren't they going to have, not to stand on that subject a little bit, weren't they going to have a stop at the depot here in Marysville?
Yeah.
There's a lot of quotes, yeah. Now we got a cruise ship running the lakes.
I was just saying, if we got a sign, give it to Robbie, give it to the senator.
Well.
Slap that though.
Yeah, I'm back here, Senator. That's true.
Okay. Next up, uh, the position in the treasurer's office. Last year, the board had uh voted to approve uh position in the treasurer's office for the purpose of the liquid tax roll maintenance assistance. Um, the, this race was brought forward and there's a question whether or not it needs to be a union position. Um, of course, the union would like to have uh this as a position, but uh Craig has some information in regards to the spending of dollars in the bill for tax revolving funds, I think that's what I'm talking about. And it says that uh read that little section real quick, Craig, if you would. So under section two, two eleven eighty-seven B, uh M C L two eleven eighty-seven B, under section two, it says, if the liquid tax revolving fund is established, the county treasurer shall be the agent for the county on behalf of the taxing units in the county and this state, and without further action by the county board commissioners, may enter into contracts with other municipalities, this state, or private persons, firms, or corporations in connection with any transaction relating to the fund or any borrowing made by the county pursuant to eighty-seven C or eighty-seven B, including all services necessary to complete this borrowing. So I presented that to Adam. I didn't uh, I think I had shown that or I spoken that with the treasurer. Um, it may give us an opportunity to, if this board is still determined to have a position to handle that fund, but it could be perhaps a non-union. If the union is saying, as I said at our meeting in December, they want the job, or they want to be union. If this is going to guarantee that they wouldn't read it and attempt to do that, and we'd end up fighting it one way or another, but. Well, from Cheryl's standpoint, and I'll speak for, unless you want to speak for yourself, it's, it doesn't matter one way or the other, how it's handled. Uh, we just need to decide as a board how to proceed. So whether to proceed as a non-union and wait for to have the um discussion with the union afterwards, how that's going to go down, or decide to make it a union position, which I have prepared some documents, but I found this morning that I didn't do that quite properly. So do we have a decision today, just proceed one way or the other, and then a clarification would present new documents and we'd have to go on a next round.
I would like to proceed if, with the position being a non-union position.
I would agree with you.
Is that a motion and a second?
Yes, sure.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. So Carolyn, uh motion to proceed as non-union and Dave as the second. Um. More discussion?
My uh, money wise, which is cheaper. Well, there's a, so that's the, that's really the issue. Now, if we're going to make it non-union, I can use the I mean, we do or do not have to use the union scale. If it's union, they already have wages put in there. If we're not going to make it union, then it's up to us to make it whatever we want. This is a non-union position. The contract that we would negotiate with somebody.
No. If you're doing a contract, I will negotiate a contract with the individual. I presented the job description.
But the final, you you
You approved this.
We have, but we would have the final say on the contract, would we not?
No.
On the dollars. It's already been, the dollars, or you're saying the person.
If I'm, if I'm in a contract to John out of the D T R F, that is at my discretion.
Okay.
If you're creating a position for the treasurer's office, which is what was approved at that meeting, all the information was there, including the wages. And that's what was approved and that's what was budgeted for. And that was it, I believe it was seventeen seventy-five hour on, for seventy hours. If you really need to change that, just let me know.
It must be with benefits?
Yeah.
Consider all the benefits.
And the total is sixty-three eight eighty-two. Without any terms. And that is what was budgeted to come in from the liquid tax revolving fund to cover those wages and benefits. When you voted on them.
So this contract would have benefits involved?
They're not your, this is not the contract.
It's position.
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 There would be other, there would be other things. This would, this kind, this job position would be broke up into different pay downs for a contracted person. It wouldn't be this job position that you approved.
Alright. Alright, Adam, I'm going to move to table. Because I think there's more information where it needs to be.
Is there a second? I could not have a second for table. Any more discussion?
At the table.
After table, we got a vote?
On on the table.
Yeah, we didn't have a second. No, I, there was no second for table.
Oh, sorry.
Well, thank you for listening. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Karen.
So even though I find myself considered a different position, I would I I have, I recognize and understand from talking with treasurer's office, there is a higher level of duties due to this, this uh
Change in the law.
Changes in the law, with the lawsuit that is ongoing, with the different responsibilities that are happening, um there are certain uh, there is an increase of, how long that, we are in a difference, like personally, I'm in a different opinion with the treasurer on how long that could last. But I think this could possibly be a good way to get this affixed at least for the next few years until uh many of these things could be sorted out.
You ready, Karen? How long is this contract?
It's not a contract.
It's a new position.
Okay, it's a new position. Keep saying that. So as a new position, it is at the discretion of this board to fund it. So if we felt like it was done, it could be unfunded.
It's funded by the D T R.
That's true, it is funded by D T R, so continue there, which um, yeah.
Anything else? Uh, roll call.
Johnson.
No.
Brady.
Yes.
Small.
No.
Brumman?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Uh, financial report. There's a few things that we need to move around for. First thing is equalization um for the new wages line item. We have to create that line item. And uh, personal scanner and um
Subscription.
So you're going to Apex, that's for the dual position with the um There's no misses, yeah, misses with registered fees. So, let's see if I got this here. We're going to create a new line item there, move in, it's going to be called selling rage.
It's not a real number in there, that was just
Okay.
That was an option.
Okay.
Are we moving thirteen fifty?
Tell me, I'm sure.
The, the second page, the calculations that were given um for the equalization department for the addition of the part-time and it totaled twenty-three, or it shouldn't do a total, so eight thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and fifty-three cents for wages and then the addition of the FICA and the benefits. And that was broke out between the two departments.
Right there.
Trying to get them clear.
Yeah, I know, and I forgot to.
So these are, these are the changes that were um calculated by the addition of that particular position, adding that for hours. And there are there was no addition on that. The strategy is just an increase of approximately thirteen a little bit more than thirteen.
Nine fifty plus four hundred?
I don't know what.
Yeah, thirteen fifty.
So the funding for that part-time position, it's broke out differently for each department between registered fees. There's a little increase about a thousand, thousand dollars in registered fees and then whatever the wage increase and um the other increases, insurance, health insurance buyout. This increase and it's prorated between the two, I believe. So there's a few changes here, but they did, she didn't have a, I don't see a total on here. So, needs to be amended. And the only way to do that, um because it wasn't prior to the adoption of the budget, would be to increase the transfer from fund balance, which currently sits at six hundred thirty-six thou, six hundred thirty-six thousand. I believe, I can really review that one.
Yes. Yes.
There's some things for the transfer and it was the final page.
Yep. For balance, before. Sixty-seven thousand four hundred six dollars and fifty-one cents? No.
The, the fund balance right now is negative three hundred.
Yeah, right.
But on the budgeted part, uh, I did not read that too. This is right here. It's six hundred twenty-six thousand eight oh eight. So we need to increase that, the changes that were presented from the clerk's office to adjust that, plus the, scanner plus the subscription for that position.
So I'd like to make motion to make appropriate changes to the registered deeds and, um, equalization budget.
That's for. So I didn't, we didn't know when we were gonna start. Sorry, didn't know the wages. What's the total of the wages?
I, I don't know what was provided. And I didn't take the time to edit it up on time.
Yeah, I had a copy of that, so everybody knows.
You haven't.
And, and I take it, so you guys did clerk's office, did the, uh, figures on the retirement split now, or did we not, won't we do that?
Yeah, we did. It's all there. They're great.
My highlight, yeah, I can't tell which one is highlighted and not highlighted. Okay, I see it.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion's second. Any more comments? Um, Rocco.
Brumman. Yes, small.
No.
Johnson.
Yes.
Yax.
Yes.
Brady.
Oh, yes. Um, another thing is, Mrs. Brumman, we'd like the commissioner's office to have a new printer because our.
Strongest one of five.
Diana. Well, she, okay. Mrs. Brumman has brought to finance.
That's.
The, uh, potential of getting a new printer for the commissioners used, because the current one is, uh, ceasing to function. Um.
I might add it if you would allow.
Yeah.
It is on the recommendation of our IT to get a new one.
Right.
I don't care if it's newer or old. I care if it works.
Also stops printing pretty copies from then.
It prints half. It doesn't print, sometimes it does print the right side of the same, but it doesn't print the left side.
So that means, I don't have a number, six hundred, six hundred?
He, he said six hundred would get.
So we'd have to approve adding six hundred to the line item budget of the commissioners under equipment. I think we have one. For sure do. Now, outside of the general fund, or we struggle with the same printer. We have not, it's up to us to decide. Uh, provide a motion if you will.
I respect that because of the, in comment, I would say I've listened to several complaints about the printer. Many, many times. And I would feel that, uh, that would be evidence that we might need one, a new one. Judging from the uproar that I've heard.
Outroar, I like that word. Um, it's like outrage and uproar. I love it. We'll use it tomorrow. Um, okay, so any other discussion?
Who's the second?
Carrie under extreme.
My hero.
Under uproar. Gotta write that down too. Um, okay, so I guess that's a, uh, roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Johnson.
Uh, yeah.
Brady.
Yes.
Brumman, yes, small.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next up, treasurer's report. Oh, let's get rid of that. There's now, uh, well, we already took care of the one thing.
Talk about the office service.
After Sure, whoever they are. Oh, After Sure, sure. Um, you wanna do it? Do it? Doesn't matter to me. Uh, I'll start, I guess. So After Sure is a company that, uh, we already deal with. Or, or we contract with to handle our insurance, health insurance for employees. Um, and they have a system to help us with HR. Had a good presentation this morning and they had all the points that we need. We would like some assistance with here at the county. We don't have any cost associated with that yet, but we did ask them to do, uh, two-day cost, no obligation review of our systems and, and everything to give us some pointers on how they can help us directly. Uh, also, we can piecemeal if we just want to get a quote on just getting a handbook, employee handbook updated. Um, doesn't have to be a contract all the time, but more information is incoming. I don't have any clue what the cost is yet.
It's been seven years since our handbook.
It hasn't been seventeen.
No matter what, you got a contract, I have one way or the other. So it might be, we'll, we'll have to get some pricing and see what they come back at. But it was a good meeting. I think she, uh, presented a lot of good knowledge. Another benefit to working with these people is that they have, um, you know, we had conversations of trying to keep all of our, uh, wages and everything, uh, current and compatible and, you know, just when you have commissioners in, commissioners out, you're swapping out committees all the time. Things kind of get jumbled up and they have, uh, access to resources that says, here's what the going wage for this particular position is in your area or comparable. And, uh, I don't, there's a lot of good things that we could benefit from. So we'll see what the cost comes back before and after that. I think that's a personal. But you got something?
No. I thought it was one of the, we have a director position, it was one other item.
Oh, uh, Dan.
Oh.
Yeah, Dan came in and submitted some information on, uh, and you, you're, you're all gonna get a copy if you haven't already, but new contracts for the inspectors.
Oh, yeah.
It's been a long time since we've updated that. He's done a great job.
Yeah.
He really has. It's been nothing but good. I think that's a personal report. We'll move on to, uh, treasurer's report, please.
Thank you all for your representation on that position. I wanted to let you know we settled, um, cost of settlement this year was two point one million dollars, which is about two hundred, three hundred thousand more than last year. In that range. Um, I've been, I had a meeting set up with the treasures and the BSA to come in on the twenty, and their review and introduction. We had a few new treasures that came in throughout the year. So they'll be getting that to experience the BSA experience directly from the, if I could come in and take care of that and then we offered to buy lunch. So that's great. Um, I've been working with the fair. They've been looking into, uh, getting online ticket sales for concert and fundraising. So we're working to that. I'm working with the fair to get that done. And that was as I've turned yesterday, brief meeting in regards to their, um, looking at the future and setting out some goals for investing. And, uh, now, um, that's why, uh, we are working on the year end. We're getting this on Friday for the, um, auditors. And there has been a lot of, uh, back and forth with that. Week this month, change, 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 everything. I'll get the information soon. They'll be here on the twenty eighth. And they have a conference next time. Uh, I will have reports for you in regards to all of that once they are here after, well, the first act of that meeting. So we have, uh, the information available to you that has been audited for the close hours of the twenty-fourth year. Anyone have any questions?
So the veterans are looking into investing? That's it for me. Any others? Okay. Then sheriff's report? Oh, clerk's report. I don't know. Yeah, sure. She has what she wanna talk in.
Um, I can't remember if I reported at the last meeting that the, um, MMRMA renewals complete. Um, seems like there's been constant deadlines for surveys or reporting. Um, I did send in, um, a second round for the November election cost for reimbursement in regard to materials and, um, uh, mine and Trina's salaries, wages for, for the nine days of early voting. Um, like Cheryl said, the audit, trying to work, trying to, uh, Tina, me and Tina and Trina have been working on putting stuff together. Uh, last week, we had a small election training, uh, for, um, a couple of the new clerks, just trying to get them ready. We had more hands on with the election equipment. And, um, for this election of the nine townships of twelve, um, there'll be two of the clerks will be their first election. Um, but I'm confident a city clerk is new and, uh, Barb Pierce is gonna come back and help hold her hand. And Tom Curl is there. So I, I, for her first election being small, I think that that'll be a good, good run for her. And, uh, Millen Township has some solid workers and she's new as well. Um, also in regard to, uh, After Sure and the handbook, uh, came up the Earn Sick Time Act, which, uh, Tina and Trina are going, uh, through an individual basis, uh, individ, employees and, and inputting this time. And there's kind of a glitch with the S and A because, you know, I mean, you're having to do this for eighty, all eighty-three of us counties. So, um, we're still working on, on tweaking that and, and, um, there's just a small hiccup and hopefully they'll get that figured out pretty soon and, uh, so they're starting to work on that and that would need to be definitely a part of our handbook because it's new law and that's not, and that's not in there. So, um, other than that, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Now the sheriff's report. Oh, boring for your day, Scott.
I, I saw it earlier. I'm, uh,
But you don't have to.
Missy brought it down.
Oh, no, no, I'm gonna use it. I'm mildly impressed it's here, so. We're gonna give you these at the personnel committee meeting this morning because we're busy. Nothing urgent, so we can talk about those maybe the next meeting or offline.
Okay, thank you.
Little bit different today. I, instead, instead of doing a review of things that have been going on, I've been talking to a couple of you offline about a, a new TASER project we've been looking at. Um, uh, going with the new TASERS. In the, in the backdrop of this, I'm gonna have John play a video here in just a second for me on why do we have to do new TASERS. But the backstory with us is that we are two models behind right now. We didn't get the, the last model. We skipped right over or we're looking to skip over. But what we have now is no longer supported by TASER. They're not backed up. They're not warranted. And the, um, the other big part with TASER is if you fully deploy with your agency, which means everybody carries one while they're on duty, they back you up with a million dollar policy or insurance. Um, that's no longer the case with us. Our trainers are outdated. They're not, they're not able to train our staff with those anymore. All we do is still train the old, with the old protocol, uh, but all of our stuff is outdated and, um, this package is a pretty heavy lift. Uh, it's just shy of a hundred thousand dollars at ninety-three thousand dollars. And they've broken it down over four, excuse me, five years. The first year I had them truncated quite a bit because I budgeted based on what my quote was last year. And I couldn't follow through with that. Our budget didn't get approved till the very last minute of last year and they needed something, uh, December thirty-first for me and I just provided with the budget being approved. So as it turned out, I think overall we're getting a better package. It includes, um, quite a bit of training, including, including a virtual reality program. I think that'll be mentioned in this, uh, seven-minute video pretty well. Um, but we're not just buying a plastic gun that sits on your belt that, that is used to, uh, in less lethal situations. It's an entire training regimen, um, that, that goes from the hands-on and verbal commands all the way up to deadly force, uh, and everything included therein. Um, it's quite a reactive program so that when you speak and give orders to the virtual reality, it responds to what you're saying. So it's not the old stuff that doesn't, you know, you're talking to some dummy, um, that's in virtual reality. They don't respond. These ones now do. They understand what you're saying and they respond accordingly and they escalate or de-escalate based on what you're saying or based on what they're, what they're programmed to do. So this is, um, e- even though it is quite expensive, uh, it does, it does take place of a lot of our training that we typically had to house out in farm ops or agencies or, um, you know, community colleges that learn and puts on YouTube course programs. So it's gonna take place of a lot of that stuff. And with that, I'll have John play the video and it's kind of, it's seven minutes, so it does drag out a little bit, but it gives you the whole backstop on why, on why.
Why does an officer ever need to use lethal force? Police don't use lethal force because it's lethal. They use it because it's reliable. It's the most effective way to stop a threat. Today, public safety has limited opportunities to stop a threat with a less lethal weapon. And when less lethal tools don't work, people die. That is the problem we felt obligated to solve.
It was a matter of global safety. We were working truly around the clock to find a solution to a problem that was and is costing lives.
We had conversations with both public safety and the community. We really involve the true end users.
The only motivation we needed was the knowledge that when this product launches, lives will be saved.
We owe public safety and communities a better way to stop threats without having to take a life.
The TASER ten is that weapon. It begins a new era in less lethal technology. When we set out to develop our next generation TASER energy weapon, we couldn't make a weapon that was simply a small step above our last model. We needed a weapon that would begin to shift how the world looks at less lethal technology.
The key is to find common ground. We want people in the community to be safe and feel safe. And so when it came to the design process, we really brought in all the key stakeholders, both public safety and community members.
I challenged my team to create this revolutionary new TASER weapon in just a few years.
Rick has a history of being an incredible innovator. For outsiders, it might appear to be an unrealistic timeline. But if you know Rick, you know anything is possible.
For Rick, this was never about money or profit. This was about the mission. He'd remind us on a daily basis that lives were being lost. And as a team, we knew that there was no excuses. We just had to figure out a way to get it done.
It was a massive engineering and design challenge.
The stakes were high. We had to do it right and we had to do it responsibly. There was just not a lot of room for error.
We faced some major roadblocks during the development of TASER ten, including the cartridge deployment mechanism.
It's really all about the misses. You look at the causes of ineffective use of a TASER energy weapon and everything indexed back towards, I just need more rounds. So we had to find.
The old one, coming out at the same time was an A.
The same size weapon. We also knew that trust in the weapon was gonna be key, which is why we focused so heavily on reliability. The threshold wasn't, can we do it right? But it's, can we not do it wrong? It's emotional to see this product come to life because I truly do think it will change the world. It will change how people think about less lethal options. I've been working on developing and improving TASER technology for thirty years. I've dedicated my entire career to the idea that we can and we must find a way to stop threats without taking lives. I'm the first to admit TASER weapons aren't perfect. But TASER ten is a hell of a step towards making TASER energy weapons the most reliable and effective force option in the world.
When officers try TASER ten for the first time, their jaws really drop. This weapon can be used at almost twice the distance of our previous models. That's pretty incredible. When someone steps back and deploys their weapon from thirty-five feet, even forty feet, they're astonished. That's when they realize this device is truly groundbreaking.
It's important that the TASER ten can be effective at stopping threats in situations where a firearm may have been the only option in the past. At the end of the day, community members and officers want to make it home. And by improving the effectiveness of TASER technology, we can help make sure that happens.
On top of the distance, TASER ten having ten cartridges is a real game changer. Currently, TASER energy weapons have one to two cartridges. Officers in the field now have significantly more chances to stop a threat with a less lethal weapon, increasing the possibility of an effective outcome. And because this weapon only deploys one cartridge at a time, officers now have even more control over creating a large enough probe spread to really cause immobility.
This device is part of a larger.
This device is part of a larger movement within Axon to make change at a faster pace. Axon has a moonshot goal to cut gun-related deaths between police and the public by fifty percent in the next ten years.
The first major step in accomplishing this moonshot goal is the TASER ten.
We're all ushering in the future with this piece of technology.
TASER ten is the start of the conversation that will include better training and better relationships between public safety and the community.
I hope that when agencies hear about TASER ten, that they're excited, knowing that they're going to be able to protect and serve their communities more safely and more effectively than ever before. I hope that officers feel relieved, knowing that they'll have a tool designed to keep them safe and avoid having to take a life. I hope communities feel more confident that they can count on public safety to make sure that they get home safe. We've built a tool that is significantly more effective than any TASER energy weapon ever. So public safety doesn't have to transition to a firearm. We're trying to shrink the pool of decisions where it's life or death, where it's me or them. Where that one decision dictates whether or not someone ever goes home.
TASER ten is designed to save lives. It's. With TASER ten, we can and will reduce the number of gun-related deaths worldwide. And I think that's as powerful a reason to believe in this product as anything else.
It's that once-in-a-career product that you work toward and dream of. It's the culmination of decades of work and thousands of forward-thinking individuals who came together in the hopes of making the world a safer place. I feel a sense of true hope watching this technology be adopted and I can't wait to see where the coming years.
There are more exciting videos out there, but I thought that was a good overview of what the product is and what it's out there for. It's really out there to save lives, so we don't, we don't have to shoot people. Without the TASER or pepper spray or any less lethal models, we don't have a whole lot between hands-on verbal commands and deadly force. And this is a great intermediate step. It wouldn't be a commissioners meeting if I didn't put Commissioner Small on the spot a little bit. Remember your reactionary gap from the police academy or?
Yeah, you're talking about twenty-one foot.
I'm talking about twenty-one feet. Very good. Pass. So twenty-one, twenty-one feet is the reactionary gap. That's the time that you have between the time you are able to perceive a threat that you're encountering and the time you're able to draw your weapon and fire it to save your life. Twenty-one feet, the maximum distance on the TASERS that we currently have is twenty-four feet, about the same. So we don't, we're rating that threshold. We're very close on whether we can get a gun out or a TASER off. Well, guess what? If you have to decide whether or not to take your gun or a TASER to save my life or somebody else's, like, cutting it pretty close. The new ones are up at forty feet. That's, that's tremendous. That's almost twice the reactionary gap. That we can, we can engage somebody with less lethal force and disarm them or take them into custody without having, having to shoot them. The last thing people want to do in my line of work is shoot people. I know the myth is out there, that we're out there killing people left and right. It's absolutely not the truth. If you follow the media, the people shot by police is very, very rare. And when it does happen, it is very often justified. It's very rare that people are shooting. There's a law enforcement shooting on our people. It just doesn't happen. Very rare. That's the presentation. We don't have to act on anything now. They did send me an agreement. I'm not allowed to sign because I'm not allowed to commit to, to funds in the future. I did budget enough money for us to get this started this year with my budget. But for, to go forward with the project, I have to have a signature and we have to commit to the next four years, excuse me, five years, four years past this year.
You mentioned the total savings of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred.
Right.
How does that come about?
Well, yeah, I don't know. This just comes with things that they've given us for, for buying the entire package. If you buy it separately or buy it as a fund.
So the savings is already built into that fifteen and nineteen thousand.
In the last, in the last report I had is that last week was a hundred and three thousand. So they've come, they've even come off of that.
This is ninety-three six.
Right. They've come off that hundred or ten thousand dollars by this point.
Oh, coming to the finance meeting in three weeks. Is that soon enough that you start dollars on that future?
Yeah. So like you said, I've, I've budgeted nearly fifteen thousand for this project this year, knowing what the numbers were as of last year. And they've been gracious enough to break it down a couple of different ways for us to look at it. And that puts us in a spot for twenty, just shy of twenty thousand dollars for the next four years after that. And again, I think as far as equipment goes, it's a big lift. It's a lot. You know, and I talked to somebody before. I guess a big lift's coming up, including either radar radios, some radar units. And those things are out there. But this is the way, I think this is the way for small communities to do this is break it down and, and even help at one point at a time and get to where we need to be.
You talked about a million dollar policy that they cover?
Yeah, they typically cover your agency for a million dollars for, you know, TASER uses and.
So let's say somebody gets killed when you use one of the TASERS.
Sure. If it was, if it was used with compliance with their training and protocols and they died from it, they would cover that. To be quite honest with you, that, that doesn't happen. But people have died from TASER use. It is, it has almost never been because of heart arrhythmia or anything like that. They've died because they were tased and they fell and hit their head on, on concrete or something protruding from a wall or they fell into water and drowned. It was not used within the guidelines that TASER lays out. So there, there's some restrictions on how you can use it. But typically, if somebody were to claim that they died from being tased in early, they were covered for that. And then would, and they would cover the lawsuit too. But they don't. People just don't die from being tased. They die from something that happens when they're tased.
So a lawsuit of some kind that would happen unless they, somebody was tased, they sued the department, they would back you for a million dollars?
If it was used properly. Yeah, yeah. And in any debt, remember, we're usually sued anyways, you know? We're not sued in every use of force. We, we get use of force complaints, maybe two or three a year. Most all of them are, we, we back them up. They are supported and the use of force was, was supported and justified. So we're doing very well with the dash cams now and, and I don't even have a use of force situation since we've had the dash cams in place. But they've taken care of a lot of allegations. People came in, had a speeding ticket won today. A gentleman came in and claimed he wasn't speeding, but he told the officer that he was going sixty in a fifty-five, even though he's going faster than that. But it was caught on dash cam and on the audio. So how do you, when you got a ticket for sixty miles an hour and fifty-five and that's what you were going, or you told her you were going? There you go.
This proven technology is other departments.
Yeah, yeah. This, this is pretty widely, widely being used in, in southern Michigan already and sporadically around northern Michigan. It's, it's not, it's the newest, latest and greatest, but it's out there. It's out there being used already. What is your, what is your sun pairing for TASER over there?
I don't know. Yeah. I don't know what it is.
Right. I, I thought this video, unfortunately you didn't do it, but it had, has the progression of, of the, the old models. It was X twenty-six, M twenty-six and M twenty-six P, which we're at right now is M twenty-six P. And then there was the TASER seven. That's the one that we just skipped over. And that's one, one of the ones you saw in there quite a bit that had the two probes going out like this. And what it is generally speaking is the first one is horizontal on the dot that you're marking with the laser and the other is twenty-six degrees lower. And the idea is to get separation. And when you get separation of mass on a, on a body between those two probes, the more muscles are affected and then more muscles contract and then you have better effect on that. The problem is if one of those probes misses, you don't have connection. So you have very, very little effect other than pissing them off. And I've experienced that. It does. It's, it makes them very mad and it's not effective. In this, this technology, even though you're having to pull the trigger twice, you're placing the darts exactly where you want them. And if you sit, if you screw up and miss one of them or they move just before you fire, you have eight, eight more opportunities. So it's not to throw ten darts in somebody and go hold on. It's simply to get two, two spots with separation of, separation of distance between body masses. And from whatever you've heard in the community about this being effective or not effective, they're very effective. The TASERS are very effective. And there's a young man that claims that he, he's, he's pulled those TASERS, TASER probes out and spat them out and fought the officers. He will not tell that story around me because I was present and it did not happen that way. It was very effective on that young man. And we took him into custody and nobody was injured. So I, I, I swear by them. What I'm still working through consistently, I use in several kinds, one in a deadly force situation and one in, in a escape situation and it's very effective in both. In a deadly force situation, Sergeant Leesworth may have been ran over by that suspect trying to flee. So unfortunately, he was wrestling with the other guy when I tased the other guy and Leesworth got lit up a little bit in that one too. So. Like pepper spray, this is why, this is why we train and a lot of you officers will take a shot with one of these things. So they know what, know what to experience if they do get a, a poke from it or exposed to it. We used to mandate pepper spray exposure. These are not mandated. They're voluntary exposures. And if, when we move forward with this, I encourage you guys to come over and, and check out the virtual reality. It's, it's supposed to be pretty neat. We did have one of these on loan last year, late last year. So we added it to the office and we're able to fire a few rounds through it. It's, it's pretty impressive. Very, very neat. One other thing I like is they provide all the ammo. This contract takes care of all the ammunition for this where the other ones did not. We had to buy training rounds and we had to buy duty rounds and they were separate. But we were consistently having to buy those to replace. So they don't date like anything else. They would expire. This, these contracts, everything is supported for five years and have it.
Except the volunteers.
When we don't have volunteers, we have voluntolds. We also have peer pressure and hazing that sometimes works too, but we don't go into that much. But there's always, there's always, there's always someone who didn't step forward. And, you know, if you're interested in Google searching some of these, they have volunteer exposures that are on there. And the same guy that did mostly talking in the video, he does a live demonstration out in Vegas a couple of years ago where he's got people that work for him that come up and they're, and they're taking live hits in front of the audience, you know? And you find they're very effective. They're very effective. Rumors about people throwing up or having heart attacks or urinating, it's, no, that sure doesn't happen. It just, these TASERS do not affect that. They, they, they're a neuromuscular effect, so they lock up their muscles. They don't, they don't have any effect over these other things. So. Any other questions on those? Our meeting is not this Friday for Hunt Board meeting. It is next Friday.
I noticed.
And thanks for taking care of the other budget issue with the vehicle.
It'll show up in a couple of few weeks.
Yeah, no problem. As long as I pay myself. That's it. That's all I have.
You're okay. Good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Turn reports started Carolyn today.
Okay. I provided you each with a small handout on the strong report from two-on-one. If you look just at the first page inside that first page, it lists the difference in call volume from March thirtieth to April fifteenth. In two thousand twenty-four, it was nineteen hundred calls. In two thousand twenty-five, during the same timeframe, it's four thousand one hundred calls. And if you go back, you'll see the rest of that type of thing. Had a clipboard meeting. We moved forward on the. The weed control and, and basically that type of thing. Excuse me. Sunrise is getting ready to do their, working for CEO Madeline is submitted to resignation effective in six months. So we have a little bit of time. There is an opioid meeting, I'm sorry, an opioid presentation on April twenty-ninth. You all got a flyer on that. I have more. I welcome any of you willingness to take it to an area where you normally, where you spend time. Churches, schools have been taken care of. Businesses, a bit of it to a point, I know they have one. And I have one other thing I would want to hand out to you.
Is this? Are you kidding? No kidding. You got it, eh? Way to go.
Good job.
Hundred thousand dollars. That's the one she's been praying about secretly for the last six months saying, well, I'm not going to get it, but.
Praying for. Good job.
There it is.
Good job.
Good. That's me.
I was praying.
Yeah, that's impressive. Nice. Oh, whoa.
Yeah, you can read mine.
So Carolyn's been working on a, trying to get a grant from the N M R E, N M R E. What is that? You thought about Carolyn?
Northern Michigan Regional Entity. It was, it was opioid money that came in. It was part of the money from the lawsuits. It seems that Michigan, now Michigan did withhold, most states did. At state level, they withheld some of the funding. Part of the reason that it was withheld was there were challenges coming from various counties. Like, oh, we think we should have gotten two dollars more or whatever. And I don't know this for, I haven't been able to track this part down, but I think that that's this money. So N M R E, Northern Michigan Regional Entity, which provides services for rehab, for drug rehabilitation. And they are the. They're the primary, but just only like at thirty-eight percent or forty percent of Sunrise Centers. Funding for clients to go to Sunrise Center, which is a residential. They also have outpatient, but primarily residential treatment place. Anyway. N M R E sent out to the twenty-one counties that they had a million dollars to disperse for projects. I. These guys know, if you dangle a dollar in front of me, I'll, I'll grab for it. I'll look for it. And I said, what in the world does Altona have that we can step forward and ask for any real amount of money? Well, most of our people, if they go in for residential treatment, go to Sunrise. Sunrise is building a new building. And I said, well, what the heck? Why don't we get something for them? So I submitted and asked for a hundred thousand dollars for furniture for the new Sunrise Center. And it has to be for the client. It cannot be for staff. But the clients need beds. They need mattresses. They need dressers. They need tables to eat at. They need, you know, all of that type of thing that is client or patient oriented. And. Of course, they need a hundred thousand dollars. Oh, come on. And I'm not a grant writer. But we did it, damn it.
No, you did it, right?
I just, yeah, I, I was. I was.
Take the fall.
No, I gotta find the next one. Okay. Not my cracker. What else is there?
Yeah, you're fair. You did. Really good.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's enough.
Okay. I attended three meetings, NIPod, CMH and Michigan Works. The theme of those meetings are, they are being looked at very seriously for some budget cuts. Don't know what that'll mean down the road. As far as our materials handling management thing, I was, talked to Mr. Peterson from Elfin County. He advised me that they're, we are ahead of schedule and we have canceled, we canceled a couple of meetings. And we'll be moving forward in the future of it. That's it.
Oh, the only thing I got to ask is if anybody's interested in being on the liaison to the Humane Society Board, send me an email.
I would love to, except I have a conflict of need on a meeting in Elfin. It's a Thursday event.
Yeah, I accept sending an email for your shit. Dave?
Well, I was at a water advisory board meeting. Someone, I got put on that because I missed the meeting. Good health partner is actually really, really good. They met, worked with all the well drillers. Actually, I work, I'm talking with Dan and Harry in the building department to try and work on some. to try and work on some changes just because the well drillers complain, they're always complaining about, and health departments are complaining about contamination. But nobody cares about abandoning wells. And he says, that's just, it's got to change. And in light, and just like how we issued building permits, we have one right now in Southern Hubbard Lake that they gave them a septic. They could put a septic tank on it in drain field, and the builder built on top of it. So they ended up, they got an Elgin system, and it's 37% smaller footprint. But that needs to go coincide, so and you get, you're able to get the perk, but then the builder puts the house on where it goes. And that's, you know, they don't get that when they get the building permit. So there's some things we're working on changing there, so.
There was a program, it wasn't through DHD for abandoned wells. You know, I had one filled, a lot of farms had them, where they would ventilate them and plug them and make them 75% cost share. I don't know if that program's still in place.
There was like 80 of them at Work Smith, and they just cut and capped.
Oh, that doesn't work.
And ended up, I think the health department, they, it was $37,000, and they ended up getting them, because that's just ripe for contamination here, so. And that's it.
So Parks and Rec, we had a meeting. There's no snow left, so the event room. However, because we did go after the ORV grant, we're going to be starting up here as soon as the trails allow for us to start grading for the ORVs. So we have not had an ORV grant in probably five or six years. The guys decided that let's go forward again. So yeah, you'll see that rumors of other materials now and then for a room for the ORV. Side-by-sides and ORVs are bigger than snowbells anymore. This year was the exception. We had a lot of snow, but that hasn't been the case in the past. So it's kind of been a pivot toward the meeting the needs of the ORV writers. Veterans, they're getting ready to put the pavilion up. So the backside of that new building will have a pavilion, I hope, by mid-June, I would guess. New flag poles should be a very nice facility when it's done. They'll get all the grass planted and it'll look good. The Memorial Day service, I believe, will be there. But that didn't come up during the meeting. The service did, but I don't remember if they were going to do it there or here. I think they did it there last year. No, Veterans Day was there. Memorial Day was here. Because we had smoking goes over whatever. Dan was in the, over here, we had, so Memorial Day was here. But Veterans was, they was over there. Anyway, we'll find out. Road Commission, so yeah, they, you know, they're of course coming off of historic road cleaning situations with trees and such. Not really sure, you know, they did track all of their expenses, all of their costs, overtime, everything. Hopefully, then maybe in this declaration, there'll be some compensation, there's some reimbursements. Nobody knows for sure. The, the, I mean, this is probably, these are the factors and requirements and all the stuff you got to do to submit anything for it. And I don't know if it's ever going to happen, so. Yeah, road restrictions is a lot on my mind if anybody's interested in that. Thirdly, I did email all of you, this isn't really my committees, but I did have the opportunity to come up with the idea of putting stuff at Viking. I didn't really hear anybody. And if any of you do hear of anybody who wants to pursue that anymore, about branches and stuff, let me know. The offer is there. We just, you know, if there becomes a... One of the thoughts was that as snowbirds start coming home and finding out their yard is covered knee-deep in branches, they're going to wonder, how do I do with all this stuff? So if you get any kind of, I think your constituents start saying, hey, what do we do with this? We could ramp that up if we needed to at Viking. It was one of the things where it must not have been important throughout the past.
All right, communications during your package, read your leisure. Last section, public comment. Nothing? Mr. Initial comments? Nothing? Meeting adjourned.